Hey, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Hinkley Township Board of Trustees to order on Tuesday, August 15 at 6:30 PM. Call the roll please.
Swede?
Here.
Asher.
Here.
Trustee Augustine has an excused absence. We have Fire Chief Rosenbaugh and Superintendent Mike The Harry and Fiscal Officer Martha Cathwood. Like to ask you to please stand on the flag with me.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will move to approve the minutes for the August 1, 2023 regular trustee meeting.
Second.
Second by Asher, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Martha, she wasn't here for the special, so you have to hold those?
No.
Okay, I'll move to approve the minutes for the August 2nd special trustee meeting.
Second.
Second by Asher, all in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the minutes for the August 3rd, 2023 special trustee meeting.
Second.
Second by Asher, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's go on, Mr. Cathwood.
Okay, the first thing, I got a few things here additional. The first is, can I have a motion to redeem the Capital One Rewards cash in the amount of $210.12 on the next statement?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Asher, all in favor?
Aye.
We have to do that twice a year, so this is the second time. Jack, you have the authorized credit card user?
Yes.
Motion for my troll.
Move to revise the Hinkley Township credit card user list with an increase to Sergeant Troll's Capital One limit from $500 to $1,500. This will be a permanent change.
Second.
Second by Asher, discussion?
This is necessary due to training that Sergeant Troll's taking, and I think it's wise just to maintain it from here on in.
I'm sorry, the agenda says, yeah, it's 1,500, yep.
Okay. So, did you do?
I seconded, we did not vote yet.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, third item is, I received information from the auditor regarding our ARPA funds. So I'd just like you to be aware of the fact that if we spend in excess of $750,000 in ARPA funds in one year, we will have to have a full, single audit. She, right now, we're under it, so I'd like the board's consideration in that. We can spend the remainder next year, but a full audit again is, A, very time-consuming, and B, very, a lot more expensive than what we had the good fortune to encounter this year. And next year wouldn't ordinarily be an audit year, but it will be if we expend these funds.
I have no objection to that.
So just keep it in mind, it doesn't appear that we're even gonna likely get to that point, but I just wanted to make you all aware of it.
Because we have till the end of next year to spend.
Yeah, yeah, well, you have till the end of next year to encumber the funds. So I think the spending, I think, 2026, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
The actual expenditure. Then I'd like a resolution authorizing the transfer of $1.3 million from the primary checking to our Star Ohio investment account. Right now, that rate is 5.47%. We haven't dipped below a level I'm comfortable with on the primary checking, so I'm very comfortable in moving this over. It's also, the Star Ohio account is a liquid account, so if some emergency would arise, but we're maintaining a balance in our primary checking of, you know, roughly $6 million. So I'd like to move some of this out to get a, take advantage of the rates.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Asher.
Swede?
Call the roll.
Swede?
Yes.
Asher. Yes.
Okay. And also, I'd like to make you aware of the, you may want to make an additional motion for Zashin and Ridge for PD contract negotiations. You had authorized an amount not to exceed $10,000 last year, but right now, on the purchase order, there's only $1,842 left.
How much? Do you think, like, another 5,000?
You know, you're not close, so I'd say another $10,000. I mean.
We don't have to expend.
You don't have to spend it, but I don't think 5,000's gonna get you there. I don't even know if 10,000's gonna get you there at this point. Again, if I get one more bill, I'm not gonna be able to pay it, so I'm asking for your consideration in that.
Can we say so moved, or I need to generate something for you?
You can, you can say so moved, so $10,000, an additional 10,000 amount not to exceed $10,000 for collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
It's just, well, it's a motion, but go ahead, Swedeck?
Yes.
Asher?
Yes.
And then finally, a resolution approving the reallocation of the following, transferring $500 to 2181-130213, which is zoning Medicare account, and additional $1,000 to 2181-130319, which is other professional and technical services from, also in zoning, from 2181-130599, which is other expenses in the zoning fund.
So moved.
Second.
Given by Asher, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
That's a resolution, do you want a roll call?
Roll call please.
Swedeck?
Yes.
Asher? Yes.
Okay, and the fund stays is currently $7,755, I'm sorry, $7,755,965.57, of which $1,114,73.70 is in pooled investments, and $6,641,891.87 is in primary checking.
Very good.
Thank you.
Anything else?
You?
Yeah, move to pay the bills in the amount of $287,478.80.
Second.
Second by Asher, all in favor?
Aye.
And Police Chief has an excuse to absence tonight, fire.
Good evening. First is request appropriations for $550 for Fire Officer 3 and 4 Class for Assistant Chief Barrett at Coyote Community College. This is online, and the both classes are combined into one class. This is chief level training, where it's all teaching, teaching Sean budgeting and policies and expenses and things like that.
And he'll be able to take it?
It'll be on his own, yeah, it'll be on his own time.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Request appropriations for 7913 for the Chief Officer Principal and Practice books through Amazon for Assistant Chief Barrett for the class.
Second, or sorry, so moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is request appropriations for $983.44 for tourniquets, chest seals, dressing, hemostatic bandages, and responder trauma dressings through North American Rescue. These are active shooter and actor threats responder kits that we're building out to have, and they're also for other traumas that we can deploy in the case of a mass casualty.
So moved.
Second, discussion, chief, is this replacement equipment, or is it something new that you're putting together?
We have not had these active shooter threat kits, so this is a new purchase.
This is, you just had a training on that?
We had trainings, we have, and we're getting more members trained into this as well. The County Chiefs Association is attempting to put on a countywide first responder, police, CMS, fire, everybody response to an active shooter sometime this year, early next year.
And because this is tourniquets and bandages, they don't expire.
No, they have a five-year shelf life.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Well, hopefully.
Medical, yeah, hopefully, we never have to use them.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Last is request to accept resignation of firefighter paramedic Scott Grand effective immediately. This is our member that was hired on Brunswick City, he is picking up overtime out there, and he does not have time to meet our minimum requirements. So unfortunately, we're losing him.
So moved.
Second discussion, what was his start?
He hasn't been here a year yet. He got, we hired him, and then we found out the week after he got hired, he went to Brunswick, he was getting hired Brunswick City, so he had to take a three-month leave, and he's only done a handful of shifts because of the overtime, either mandate mandated overtime for Brunswick City, or him just picking up voluntary overtime, because he, he, his air conditioner, yeah, I don't blame him, he's making 50-something an hour, I guess, on overtime over there, unfortunately.
Okay.
And that was something that we discussed, just to let the public know, that was something that I asked Chief Rosenbaugh in one of our first meetings last year, and that is, you know, I think Hinkley is kind of always gonna be kind of like a farm team for some of the, you know, for lack of better words, when it comes to our personnel, because we're part-time, and we don't pay what, what some of the other big cities pay. So this is just gonna be kind of the ongoing battle of, it's a numbers game, which I think you do well at, your entire department constantly looking for new talent and trying to recruit people, because you just gotta keep building that funnel.
We have 11 in paramedic school, one actually takes his test Friday.
We're not talking about that right now.
No, 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 I know.
We're not gonna jinx that.
No, no, we're not, we're not, but I got the packets for two members that is Parma's looking at, one of them is number one on Parma's list, and that's a one-year leave for Parma's policy, and another member is being looked at by Brook Park right now, which is a three-month leave. They're, they're all in medic school, so I don't think they can be hired by any of those departments till they finish medic school. One finishes late August, the other two will be in December.
And Chief Grossman, because he's also a teacher at the schools, is able to recruit a lot of, a lot of the younger, I don't wanna say kids, because it sounds bad, but a lot of the younger firefighters, so that, you know, while they're in paramedic school, they're working here, you know, for, you know, two years, and getting that experience, and it's a benefit to the township. So if there's ever any questions about, you know, we've accepted a lot of resignation over the last couple of months, so to kind of clarify for the public, that is why.
Yeah, it's, it's the, the full-time, and then there's, there's jobs out, the Parma, I believe, is hiring nine right now, and they have a grant, they got hired to be able to hire another nine next year. We're obviously never gonna be able to compete with, with that kind of stuff, but the jobs in the fire service, police departments, as everybody knows from the news, is abundant out there. So my hope is, we keep the good attitude at the fire station, we keep competitive, and we hopefully can retain at least 50% of the members we, we hire on. And I know as we go through, some, as they get families and everything else, will leave because of families and all that, but we got a good core down there right now, and they're young.
Agreed.
They're eager, they're, they're chomping at the bit to do the job.
Good.
So, thank you.
Touch truck, just a reminder, touch truck.
Touch truck, October 1st at 1 to 4 at the fire station.
Are you looking for more trucks?
Yes. Oh yeah, please do, yep, please do, we're always looking for more trucks. My wife loves how big it gets, I, I will take anything.
Couple pickup trucks with some throwback there.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Sorry, did we vote on that resignation?
Are you asking me?
Yeah. I thought you were, I thought you were making little ticks, in case we didn't.
Okay, I, I think you did, and then you asked about.
Yeah.
I think you did.
Okay. Anything else for chief?
No.
Anybody in the public?
Blood drive is, I don't remember, it's September, and it's, I believe we're back in the old fire station now, because the, in theory, the temperatures will be cooling down. That's why we move it to the new fire station, because of the air conditioning statistically in the summer, but this summer that we've had has not been a hot summer, but I'll get that for the September meeting, I'll let you guys know.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful night.
You too, guys, appreciate it.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Fantastic.
One of the things I wanted to bring up was, I know we had talked about this a while back, about the service department, like the clothing allowance. So we finally finished our contract out with UniFirst for what we were paying, and we're hoping, you know, not to go with another clothing company, that's why we're asking to raise that allowance, so we can take care of our, pretty much our own clothing, so, and that's what we were looking to, pretty much, it would be 850 a year, but biannually is how we normally get our allowance, it'd be 425 biannually, where we are, is it 250 right now, Martha? They buy in. So that's what we're looking to increase that too, I just wanna see your guys' thoughts on it, and what you were thinking.
So you wanna double it?
Pretty much from what we were paying for UniFirst, your savings about per year, if we go this route, you're gonna be right around 1250 a year for savings.
Because of the additional charges on top of the clothing?
Mm-hmm. I mean, we're paying fuel charges, the, the Duff charges, the garment maintenance charges.
Is that, is that total 1250 a year total, or per service department?
That'd be per year.
Okay. Well, if we're saving, it seems like a good option.
And just like, I know the police were getting some of the scraper mats, like, we already replaced them all, like, per year, we were paying about, probably about 500 bucks for rentals, I just replaced them all for like 140 bucks, so I could replace them two to three times a year, really, but like I told the chief, I'm like, we can go down there, we'll wash them, like, at that price, so, doesn't make sense really, spend that kind of money to have mats going in and out of there, when I go down and T-bone, replace them for that, so.
So we'll.
Motion to increase it?
We'll move to authorized clothing purchased by the service department, the amount of $425 biannually.
Second.
Second by.
Did you change it to uniform allowance?
Second is amended.
Uniform.
Okay, second is amended, moved as amended.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's pretty much all I have, just a couple of updates, all of our asphalt is pretty much done now, all the chip seals done. Bellis is pretty much done, they gotta come and do some grading work on it and some burrowing, but other than that, it's, it's been paid. If you haven't drove it yet, go drive it, they, Melway did an awesome job once again. They did really good everywhere, so, and they reached up the roads that were coming up last year already, those are all done too, so, you know, last, the last project for this year, hopefully, you know, Valley Brook, and that should be moving, what'd he say, they're waiting on the base and work, so, pretty much, there's some metals, they thought maybe three weeks for starting, which, letters are already out to the residents up there, and everything's, you know, signage is posted, so that's moving right along.
I know, I asked you before the meeting, so I'll preface it by saying it is a state project, but for some of the people that have asked questions about 606 with the chip and seal, end of the month, are we thinking?
I would say.
I know it's not your call.
I would say as soon as they get good weather, that's just my guess.
Okay.
Because it looks like they're gonna be doing, you know, their foundation repairs, and then they'll come in and then do the chip seals.
So not this week?
Probably not.
Looking at the forecast, yeah.
Yeah, chip seal, they need, like, real good dry weather, so depending on the oil that they're using.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just, I, I think this is what we all have in mind regarding the uniform allowance, but you're looking at the 425 for the remainder of this year, we're not looking at an $800.
Correct.
Just, I'm, I'm just clarifying the conversation, correct? Have you guys purchased anything yet for this?
Not for the second.
And, okay, so it would be a 425 allowance for the remainder of the year, is that what?
I mean, this is.
I mean, I, I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page with this.
Yes.
That's fine, we can revisit it, but that's kind of what I was thinking from, like, remainder on, but.
Okay, I'm just saying.
We can always revisit it, yeah.
Okay.
I think it's not gonna be 850, yeah, now, for the end of the year.
No, no.
That's all, I'm just making sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, we already paid, or had the uniforms for half the year, and that's why I told the guys, I was like, no, just.
I'm just saying out loud, whatever, I was hoping.
I just wanted to make sure, people aren't gonna be expecting $850 in the next five months.
Yep.
No, because they had to turn all their pants in, you know, with UniFirst, so they have to, they need to get some pants and some stuff like that, so.
Clarifying questions are important.
Especially right before winter, so.
Why did you just, I, it might get us wasted.
And then as we discussed, we're gonna, moving forward, figure out what the allowances are for each kind of item, you know, so.
Just to get, and then we talked about that, taking six to eight months, just in a review for.
Okay. All right, anything else?
No, that's about all I got tonight.
Yes, sir.
Can we get a white line on Bellis Road where it crosses State Road westbound, we have a stop sign?
Oh, a stop bar?
Pardon?
A stop bar?
Well, a white line, whatever you wanna call it.
Well, you can.
Either you have a stop, stop sign, or stop with the white mark, you have a choice.
Okay, well, I didn't know if you were talking white edge lines or white stop bar, that's why I was clarifying. Yeah, they have to come out, and that's in the contract, so they, they'll be out to do it, yeah. Yeah, they'll have stop bars and all that, that's part of the, the bid. Well, if you're saying on the part that we paved?
On Bellis.
On Bellis, the part that we paved, which part of Bellis, that's why, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
It's the very end of Bellis before it gets to State.
Okay.
The tar of repaving State has tarred over the white line. So cars either come up and stop, and stop sign, and they can't see either way, and then they pull forward into State Road. Meanwhile, there's cross traffic.
I'll have to look and see if it's our section or county section, because if it's ours, we'll go out and do it, if it's county, I'll notify them, so, yep.
Who else? Right, you have nothing else, have a good evening.
You guys too, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Um, zoning, trustee Augustine has on your Country Brook Cove and Rock Ridge Estates plans will be on the September 6th agenda for the Medina County Planning Commission. For cemetery, we have a deed designed, so if I could ask two people to come up to witness, I'd appreciate it. Maybe a notary, if there's one available. Wish I had my sunglasses.
Do you want me to go put the two two on?
Two two's getting a lot of news, huh? Are there two?
Uh-huh, yes.
Yeah, two, Maple Hill and Ridge.
The special pen is not for cemetery.
Not, yeah.
For zoning.
You gotta stay in your lane.
Tom Wells, Tom's got the special.
I had to go to a special training to learn about the special pen.
Anywhere?
On anywhere on witness.
That's what we're hoping for.
This is normally Jeff's job.
Thank you.
Jeff's not here.
I know. It says, oh, where, locations?
Rock Ridge is the new one going in off of Mattingly, I believe. Um.
And you should know, there we go.
Nobody asked. Rock Ridge, correct, is Stony Hill at Mattingly.
Can we go up to the microphone, please, because Judy is.
That's right.
Please tell us about these developments, we don't know anything about them.
So Rock, Rock Ridge is the Stony Hill.
And the Engelman.
Oh, you want me to say that, oh?
Judy's taking the meeting then.
I'm sorry, oh, that's right, Cynthia Engelman, Ridge Road. The Rock Ridge Estates is on Stony Road where it bends into Mattingly, and then the Country Brook Cove is Go Down Country Book, and there's a stub street called Don Prey, and it's at the end of that stub street, it's a one parcel development, 22 acres.
Basically, it's the southwest corner of Stony Hill and 303, it's tucked in there.
Not 303, you're talking about the, the rock.
Yeah, no, the, the Country Brook.
Country Brook is.
They're the ones who are looking for an exit out on 303.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they are not exiting, right, they're, they're going to cul-de-sac on Prey, and then there'll be a one-lot, 22-acre property that will be Country Brook Cove, or whatever they call it.
Are they subdividing it?
No, it is, it is one parcel with the one owner who intends to build a home in the center of it.
That's the former Serenity Court.
So it's part, so the parcel of the, what was Serenity Court, I forget how many acres total, but that 22 acres was split from the northern part of that property, and that's still sitting out there, but this is the southern end of what would have been Serenity Court, yes.
And the other Rock Ridge Estates is, is that 72 acres, and it's?
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't remember how many acres it is.
But it's, it's subdivision of two-plus acre blocks.
Yes, it's an ordinary subdivision, and it has a cul-de-sac at the end. So, the, the question, the big question related to that one was whether there should be a stub street into the property north of it, which is, I forget, maybe 40, 50 acres. The county planning department recommends that, but the trustees, you passed a resolution saying no stub street some time ago, so.
Yeah, it looks like it's 24 lots up there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have, another thank you to Greensmith for a tree donation, confirm for the fall. We appreciate what they did, trustee Asher.
Okay, let's start off with the Kimball survey. I emailed everybody that Kimball survey with the changes that we had discussed from the last meeting. Anybody in the audience is looking, I did print out some extra surveys also over there on the table. So with the changes that we agreed to, as it reads, "As Hinkley Township approaches the end of our five-year contract with Kimball Companies Incorporated for single trash and recycling services, we are sending out this survey in attempt to better gauge what our residents in Hinkley Township would like to see for the future regarding trash and recycling for our township. Question number one, have you ever applied to opt out? I did put in an asterisk there, note, this is for any application accepted or denied. It is important to have a better understanding of the trash needs when placing a new contract out to bid, and there is a yes box or a no box. Question number two, are you in favor of maintaining a single trash hauler? There is a yes box or a no box. Question number three, are you in favor of moving forward with single trash hauler? What hour, what quarterly fee do you consider your cap amount? And we have three options, one is $100 a quarter, $115 a quarter, or $130 a quarter, meaning what are you most comfortable? You know, if you're not comfortable going over $115 a quarter, then that's the box that you would check, and if our bids come back at 120, and the majority of the respondents say 115, then we could not, we would not proceed forward with 120 a quarter. Question number four, do you want a three-year or five-year contract? There is also an asterisk saying, note, a three-year contract will result in a higher cost of service versus a five-year contract. And then there is an option to check your three-year or five-year. Question number five, are you utilizing the recycling feature, and it's a yes or a no? Question number five, are you utilizing the recycling feature and it's a yes or a no box? Thank you for taking time to complete the survey, results may be emailed to admin@hinkletwp.org or mail to Hinkley Township, fourteen ten Ridge Road, Hinkley, Ohio, four four two three three. It is in bold at the bottom with a bunch of asterisks, no response to the survey will be considered. You are happy with the current service and do not wish to have any changes. Respectfully, Hinkley Township Board of Trustees, any concerns or changes that you would like to see in this?
Well, the only thing is the monetary amount that, I don't know that.
It's realistic.
Well, not, not only that, but gut feeling is you're going to check a hundred dollars a quarter and, and you know.
I would think if you check a hundred dollars a quarter, then I, do we need to change the wording on that, because then that would mean if the majority of the responses are a hundred dollars a quarter, which is not realistic, then we're not going to be able to proceed with a single hauler when we put it out to bid.
That's what I'm saying, I don't know that that question, should that question even stay in, then, you know, your hands are tied at that point.
So you would say take out that question completely?
Yeah, I would think, and then see what the bids come in at, if we decide to move forward with that.
Okay.
And then the other is how, how are we tracking who is replying? So that there's not, you know, somebody stuffing the ballot box.
We talked about, and it is in the quote, which I will be making a motion for a little bit later, well, like in a minute. We're going to do the numbered surveys like we did for the comprehensive plan audit. So everything would be numbered, so we know which number is for which address.
And the email would have to have a number in it, if you responded by email?
Well, if you're going to respond by email, I mean, the way everybody did it with the comprehensive plan audit was they took a picture of it or scanned it in, that was their response.
And that has to be stated in there somehow, so that they know that, instead of you know, typing up an email, number one, yes, number two.
So like completed form may be emailed.
Scanned and emailed.
Scanned and emailed.
Yeah, that might be better.
Anybody have any thoughts they would like to add from the public?
Yes.
You do.
Jim Byaloski on Arborcrest, quite on the, at the second line down, should you insert the word hauler between single and trash? Because it's considered a single hauler now.
Yeah, you could do that.
Just remove the word trash.
No, insert the word hauler, single hauler, trash and, and recycling services.
Oh, second line, I thought you meant second question.
Second line, sorry.
Single hauler. Got it.
And then suggestion on number five, instead of saying, are you utilizing the recycling feature, are you taking advantage of recycling? It just puts a different spin on it.
I have no objection.
And then the address, Jack already took care of, I'm assuming the yellow means nothing, it's just.
It's highlighting a change.
Got it.
That was put in.
Taking advantage of the recycling feature.
Our recycling server, however you want to word it, but taking advantage of it just takes a little bit different approach to the same question.
Got it. How is the no response, is that not negative and? You can.
I think it's good, I think I would just put it up at the top, because I think it I would just like to, I, I, yeah, I would put it at the top. Thank you.
Richard Pearl, I opt out, and if I was to fill out this survey, I would check yes for questions one and two, and perhaps no answer for three, four, and five. Will that affect anything? Or would it affect anything if I also checked no for question five?
I don't think so, I think it's just giving us some information on what parts of it you're using or not using.
Okay.
And if you, i- if you're okay with having a single hauler, but you do opt out, those kind, that kind of data.
I would prefer a single hauler. Less trucks on my road.
Martha, anything?
Thought I heard a, you know. I, I think what you need to do is is to make clear that this is just what Jack said, it's going to help you make a decision. This is not going to be if you get two hundred responses for this and that. And then people are going to be mad because you didn't go along with the majority. This is just to help you make a wise decision for which you've been elected for. So this, I can tell you that that's exactly what's happened with five, six years ago with this. And it really could be a good tool, but it can be a good tool on many different sides. And it can cause some dissension, so I, I think it's really important just to say, we're asking a few questions to help us make a decision. But this isn't a vote, okay? You're the deciders.
At the end of it, just to help the trustees make an informed decision.
To assist in the decision-making process, it is not. And I think when you have the conversation or talk about it, you need to repeat that over and over.
To assist in decision-making process.
To assist the trustees in the decision-making process.
In the decision-making process, got it. I will change this tomorrow and send it out to every, you know, I'll just, I'll change, I'll change this tomorrow and I'll put the hard copy in everyone's box. Good? Okay, then.
Were you making a motion or you want to wait?
I'm just going to jump around a little bit on my agenda, because I'm going to move then to make a motion to pay Angel Printing a cost not to exceed one thousand four hundred seventy-four dollars and forty-three cents for the printing of the annual two hundred, two thousand twenty-four Kimball forms and resident survey. This does not include postage, postage will be determined at a later date.
Second. All in favor?
I. Okay, wanted to talk about this now. November seventh, couple months away, but I feel like it's going to be here before you know it, that is election day. And also our regular trustee meeting. I liked what we did for the special election. Was it the special election or was that Fourth of July where we just moved to the regular meeting? We made it a special meeting for the purpose of a trustee meeting for the very next day.
Yeah, I think that was on the fourth. Why don't we just do meetings on the Wednesday, everybody, ever do them on Wednesdays?
Well, they used to be on Mondays when I started, and then we moved them to Tuesdays, but we, you know, last election, we, we just moved over to the senior room with people too on the Tuesday, that's an option too. That way, I think when you and Jack were up for election, that's where the meetings at.
I was not at that one.
No, no, you weren't.
I was still at the church.
Yeah, but I mean, that's.
Well, for purposes of this, I'm, I'm fine with moving it to the eighth.
They've never had meetings on Wednesdays before.
You wanted to say something about Wednesday, Mr. Pearl?
I said, don't change it.
No change.
Yeah.
I have a pressing engagement.
He's set in his ways.
So it works, there, there was a discussion six years ago about a long discussion. And I decided to leave it Tuesday because it doesn't interfere with other meetings in the area.
Well, for our purposes today, I'm okay with moving it to the eighth.
Moving it to the eighth.
Yeah, that's the same thing we did on the fourth.
Well, that's the Fourth of July.
Yeah.
It's a holiday. Election Day is in the holiday.
But it should be.
No, I don't think it should be. You know what it does, it throws off all the bills, it throws off, I mean, it, it just.
Okay, so.
Like a year ago, we canceled maybe?
Yeah.
One whole year ago.
You know, the senior room really holds sixteen people.
Yeah, all of you would fit in there, I've been in there.
I'd be, as you, you can't zoom in there, which.
We can zoom the way we did with the laptops in the garage, remember? That was fun.
Yeah, I mean, we could do that, so you want to do that, just fold it.
Yeah, that's, that'll work too.
Uh, so we'll hold it in the senior room, I will let Suzanne know just for planning purposes. Number seven, okay. Um, I wanted to elaborate a little bit more after the last meeting. Jeff Schuster from the Boy Scouts who came here and talked to us last time approached me after the meeting, because he had seen I had put out there kind of asking for ideas of what the residents would like to see. Um, some of the ARPA money used for, just trying to build my wish list, and he had approached me because he had mentioned all of our flags in the center of town, he said, should be retired, they're looking pretty rough. So we started talking about that, which I said is something that I could start researching and put on my wish list, but that's not the point of this. The point of this is, we started brainstorming on ways to overcome the hurdle with the vinyl flags that they're going to have, since they can't burn them. And I had suggested to him that, which I spoke to Black Ops Destruction also. I said, you know, maybe they could shred them for him, Black Ops Destruction is a veteran-owned company. So I did speak to them, which he was very excited about that possibility. And Black Ops said that they would do it. So the shredding event that's going to happen at the elementary school on September thirtieth, starting at nine AM, the Boy Scouts are going to come at eight thirty, and they're going to shred the flags then. And then they can empty the truck, because the question was, if the truck is full of paper, then the flags are going to get filled with all of that also, so they're going to shred the flags, not the cloth ones. They're still going to do the burning ceremony on October first, but they're going to shred those vinyl flags. And then we started talking about a memorial, and Jack, I think you mentioned this at the last meeting, which I thought was an excellent idea. If we buried those flags at Veterans Memorial, um, I think that that would be a really, a really symbolic, nice thing to do. So we could bury the remnants of the flags over there and also the ashes once they, they burn them. And we started talking about memorials. So I reached out to a local memorial company, just to kind of get an idea of, you know, if we wanted to put a stone or, you know, a bench, something like that to mark that this is where the retired flags go. And Jeff had also mentioned maybe doing something like an Eagle Scout project. So an Eagle Scout could maybe make a memorial versus actually purchasing a memorial. We said would be something more permanent. They also mentioned if we went that route and decided to do like a granite memorial stone or something like that in Veterans Memorial, that the Boy Scouts would be willing to do some fundraisers to help split that cost with the township. So I just wanted to know if you think I am losing it, or if you think that's a you don't have to answer that, or if you think that's a good idea, if you want to, me to continue to research that and see what we could get in terms of a memorial from, from a local company? Or move forward with the Boy Scouts doing an Eagle Scout project?
I don't know, the Cub Master was talking about looking into what they're doing in, in other areas relative to it, did you have that discussion and, right, and he's just open to anything at this point?
He's open to anything, he loved the idea of the flags being shredded. And he also really liked the symbolism of the flags being retired and buried at Veterans Memorial Park. He really liked that idea as well, and we said with having them shred like they will be, it will take up a lot less space versus just, you know, the way they do it is they have to cut them in a very specific way. So it will take up a lot less space to have them shred like that, so. And we also said, doing it at Veterans Memorial, and I was looking at, you know, something like a bench, you know, like a granite bench, like type of memorial. And the thing that I liked about that, which he did also, is, you know, you could bury, bury the flags and bury the ashes, which we said, the memorial plaque or whatever it is that we do, we might not see that for another year, a year and a half. But we could still bury the flags now, knowing that we have a plan going forward. And me, how I was envisioning it is, if you have like a bench or something, you put that over where you bury the first. But then you can continue as retirement ceremonies continue with the flags, you can bury around the bench also. So you're not, you know, lifting up a big memorial stone or something every time you need to bury some more.
Well. And I don't know, I don't know how they do it, don't know what it is, but I would like something that we didn't have to. Is it something that you can add to? So if you had some kind of granite thing there that maybe even the Boy Scouts can open to add future disposals to, you know, and have that be a ceremony in its own right. Uh, and then, 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 you know, depending on how large that is, there's capacity there for decades. You know, without having again to, you know, expand the area that's involved.
Were you talking to my gym, because my gym, my gym kind of had an idea, like, because he said, I, and I haven't, I haven't been able to find them. But I think he said there's a company in Lake Bailey City that he said make like like a concrete, like type of box that you bury that in the ground and then put like a slab of stone over that. So you remove that to put the flags. The thing is, I don't think that these are going to deteriorate, you know what I mean? And I guess.
That's what I'm saying, depending on what size that container is.
Right.
It should be, I would imagine, you know, decades and decades worth of retired flags, I don't know how much space they take up or.
Well, and.
Or ashes.
I thought we're going to find out this time, because they said it's been three or four years since they did their last one, because everything got put on hold with COVID, so this is going to be a large amount that we're going to get. So I feel like that would be something to kind of gauge it, that if this was a three-year time span and it takes up this much space, then what's it looking like, you know, four more times of this retiring, you know, which is, you know, getting us into twenty years from now.
Maybe something like from Raiders of the Lost Ark, you know, the Holy Grail kind of thing, you know?
That's just weird, because that's actually, actually what I was envisioning when Jim was talking about it, so. Um, what did they do before they burned them? So they have, the way that they retire flags is, they have to cut a flag to render it retired. I thi- I think that's the term, is to render it retired. They would cut it in a specific way, and then they would have a burning ceremony, and they would burn all of the flags. And then they would take the ashes from the flags and bury those.
But where?
I don't know.
They've done this before, so it's by someone's house.
Could be at Hinkley Lake, I don't know, I don't know. But the problem now is, um, in, in recent years, everything like this one, it's vinyl and there's kind of a nylon. They're both bad to burn though, I know that. Really? Okay, anyway, it's bad for the environment to burn it. Yes, save the comments till the end, please. It's bad to burn, so that's why, uh, now what he was doing was researching what other troops and other packs are doing with them, see, what do you do with it, because you don't have ashes left over from it. So just kind of brainstorming, and I had suggested that to him, but I said, let me make a phone call and see. I, I don't want to be promising anything that, you know, won't actually happen. So this just kind of all came about in the last two weeks and. this just kind of all came about in the last two weeks and it's something that I wanted to discuss with the board to see how the board felt about it. If that's, you know, before we start making more plans and doing more research, do we want to look into that? So I can try and look into that and see what I can find. I mean, I, I honestly feel like even looking into it right now, maybe we should wait and see the volume that we get from everything.
That's a bad idea.
That's shredded. So I can revisit that. Cause Jeff and I talked, we said this could be a year from now, but at least we know we have a plan. So, okay, so I just wanted to talk about that. Should we look for one?
Wait for it until there's a national solution that everybody does.
I, they could, but. Well, he said there was, I think he said there were six hundred flags, but half of them, half of them are clothed. So I think it's more of, um, I, I think, I do not know, but I think it's more of they want to do it now. And I mean, that's really a question for the Boy Scouts also is, you know, wait until there's a national answer. And I think it's because these flags are just sitting around and it's taking up a lot of space and a lot of storage. So I think that that is the reason of why they want to start this up again, you know? My conversation with Jeff was him telling me everything they're trying to do to revitalize the Scouts in Hinckley, um, and not just Hinckley, you know, the Highland area in Medina County, everything that they're trying to do to revitalize that. So I think bringing back like ceremonies like this is part of that. And I think, I do not know. That's just reading between the lines of my conversation with him. So, and I certainly don't want to say, can't you just wait another year or two? And so they come up with a solution. It's, I think that the township's just trying to assist and help them with it and be as helpful as we can because we support the Scouts.
I like the respectfulness, the ashes to ashes, dust to dust, putting the ashes in the ground. Maybe we should save the nylon until there is a national solution to what everybody should be doing with the nylon.
You can email them. Can email the Boy Scouts and ask them. So, I mean, it's, it's there. Um, I feel, I feel. I, I feel like.
That's what I was talking about, a containment.
Mr. Ford, from community, are ashes good for?
Absolutely.
For, for, to help new things grow?
Absolutely.
So we could use the ashes to help the new red bud trees grow. I know that it's not a solution for the nylon, but.
There's going to be a national solution. It's only a matter of time.
We would hope.
Time goes on. There are only points forward.
Okay, I don't, I just don't have a response for that. So, um, the other thing that I was approached today with actually, and I said I would discuss it with the board and see your thoughts on it. Kristen Colzeberry reached out to me because she is a part of the Hinckley Scouts as well. And she knows that we're having the shredding events on September thirtieth. And she asked if there was a way that the Boy Scouts could get involved in this process and also sell their popcorn. Um, utilize the, you know, the traffic that this is going to produce to sell the popcorn. I said, the first thing I would do is reach out to Superintendent Ockerman about this, since it is going to be on, um, Highland School property. So I said, just make sure that they don't have an issue with it. And I said that I would discuss this with the board. I don't have an issue with it, but I know that, you know, when this was discussed maybe a month ago, I had mentioned, you know, do we want to turn this into a fundraiser? And the idea was no, we wanted to keep this as a free event to the community. However, this is not associated with the Shred Day event. It's just an opportunity for them to sell popcorn.
That's what I would say. They, they would have to contact the school and see if the school wants to let them in there. I don't know that you want to put anything else in there that's gonna bind up traffic coming in and out. I, I don't know what that even looks like at this point.
No, and that's what.
Just the line.
Yep.
You don't even get out of your car. I mean, you, you do like maybe to help on the low, but you just drive through.
Okay, I, I heard that traffic was backing up on three oh three with that. But I also heard that from the two different companies who are donating their services, said you never know what you're gonna get. I mean, you, it could be a day where nobody comes. It could be a day that it's, you know, really just jamming the whole time. Now, what I would say about the new Hinckley Elementary is that parking lot is much longer than anything that we've had in the past. And, um, I think, I haven't checked it yet, but I think Lynn put the information on the website of the items that they take. And I think also it might cut down on, on the paper shredding company. They have limited you to three banker's boxes. Because if not, I said, you have people bringing like a pickup truck of everything that they want shredded. So it's three banker's boxes. So hopefully that'll help kind of keep it, keep it down and, you know, she wanted me, you know, when I talked to her again this afternoon, she said, we'll see what you guys say before she reaches out to Superintendent Ockerman. So you're fine with it. If I'm understanding this correctly, you're fine with this, but you say it's really the school's decision. It's the school's property. Okay.
I think you need to understand what just typically how it's gonna work before you even make a decision. Cause if people are just sitting in their car pulling up, dropping off their boxes, which is what we did before, then I don't even know.
People can get out. I do know that people can get out because on the e-waste company that does the electronics.
Judy can't hear this.
Yes, I apologize. Judy, if you're there, I'm so sorry, but I'm very bad at this. If you're gonna talk, you have to come up and use the mic. Okay, thank you.
And the question was, um, Angela Chesnick's question was how it's going to work? Will people remain in their car, um, to have something like this, having the Boy Scouts and how the event in general is going to work? And with the e-waste company, you get out of your car because you can actually, they said you can push the button. Like if you want to shred your stuff, you can push the button. So you know it's getting shredded. Um, somebody else asked that question um, to me via social media. They said, is this one of those things where they take your stuff and they walk away? And you don't actually see it getting shredded? You see it getting shredded. So you can park and you can get out and see it being shredded. Any other questions? If you do have them, please come up to the podium. All I have.
All right, very good. I've already addressed my issues. Anybody from the public would like to speak, come up to microphone.
I think I know what you're gonna ask.
Yes, you do. Um, Jackson, Regoney, Walden Reserve, um. So I brought this up before the meeting. Um, for the way the pay the proctors work, it's fifteen an hour. And the way that it's been going is you start your time sheet when the meeting starts, when the meeting ends. For the Board of Zoning Appeals, that could be five minutes, three minutes, twelve minutes. So I'm getting like fifty cents, not seventy-five cents for coming out here for like half hour, which is not the end of the world. I have no objection. But I think to be more fair, there should be like a minimum amount before like ten, fifteen dollars. And then once it goes like over an hour, then you can start like the fifteen an hour. I know you said you had some thoughts.
Well, um, I'm fine, for you starting your time, when you're here, I'm fine with you fifteen minutes before the meeting because you get here at least a half hour before the meeting. You set up the room and you set up, um, the microphones and everything. So I'm fine with, um, starting your, your time sheet, you know, fifteen minutes before the meeting ends. Um, I know that the BZA meetings can be very, very short. Trustee meetings generally are not. Uh, zoning meetings can be hit or miss with that. So I would say, um, something I would propose, if you're comfortable and Martha, if you're comfortable with it, is can we do something like, um, you're paid for an hour? Whether you're here for five minutes or you're here for thirty minutes.
If there is meeting, is like the BZA meetings, is there a reason you don't do those remotely if they're?
I, I usually, I don't know usually how long they're gonna be. I mean, obviously I could just switch to, I just like coming in and seeing what's going on. But if you guys prefer me to just stay home for those meetings, I can do that.
And how many meetings are we talking that you're doing?
I've done nearly all the BZA meetings. I'm doing all of them right now because Lisa's not available.
So like in a month?
Three, four.
An hour.
Don't look at me. He's an independent contractor. This is up to you guys. This is your discussion.
I actually was looking at you because I was going to ask you, do I have to, um, amend the, um, organizational?
I think in there it just says that you have a proctor. I mean, you're, what you're doing is telling Jackson when his time starts and when his time ends. He's getting paid fifteen dollars an hour.
So I, I would say we start your fifteen minutes before the start of the meeting, that'll be your start time and then a minimum of one hour.
I think that's fair. Thank you.
To pay it in that manner?
He, he's an independent contractor. He can determine what his rate is. This isn't.
Yes, yes, I, I will probably approve of that.
He's not an employee. You're not, I mean.
Right.
If you're contracting with him, if that's what you're doing, they make a motion, you're contracting with him under those terms. But right now you have an, an agreement to retain a proctor for fifteen dollars an hour. How he determines what his hour is, is.
So you'll be reporting your times to us in the manner we discussed.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This man.
Hi, I'm Stacy Maliker. I am the superintendent with Medina County Board of Developmental Disabilities. So trying to get out to the community and share our annual report there. I have some extra folks would like to take a look at that. Um, and, um, just a little information, more information about the board. You know, right now we serve about fourteen hundred people in the, in the county and we serve folks from birth to end of life. Um, and, um, we are the funder and, um, coordinator of services. One of the things that, that I've been very excited about is, um, with our direct support professionals. Um, and those are private providers. Uh, they up recently, with the state budget, there was an increase. The state is the only uh, agency that's able to increase the rate, hourly rate of reimbursement. And so we had a historical increase and that was through a, a lot of, um, advocating with, by the county boards, by private providers. And, um, what we're looking at now is, is direct support professionals. Those are the folks that do the day-to-day living skills, health, personal hygiene, all that stuff. Right now, the average wage, and I say average, is a little over thirteen dollars an hour. Um, with this increase by both the state and county boards are also, um, contributing to that increase. We're looking at, uh, this fiscal, first fiscal year, eighteen dollars an hour and then nineteen dollars an hour on average. Not everybody's good at, but it, again, it's a really difficult job. It's a critical job. So, um, we're very excited and very happy that, that we've been able to, to work together as a field to get that increased. Any questions for me?
It's a wonderful agency. I, you probably know my wife, Connie.
Yeah, I do. I do. Yes. Enjoyed working with her. Yeah.
It's, it's a wonderful agency. You guys do a lot of great work. I appreciate it.
Thanks. And we're trying to get more people in, uh, and included in the community. One of the topics I'll just throw out there is, um, there's a big push right now for adult changing tables and bathrooms. So I would mention that to you. If you're ever looking to do renovation or have a new county building or park building. And, you know, we, we think about people that are in wheelchairs, um, that are not able to use the facilities and actually need a changing table, that there's a, a big push. There's actually, the state has actually put money out there for, um, businesses to, to, um, purchase those and have those installed. So again, it's just about being included and having access to the community and being part of your community. And I thank you, all of you, for your support because without the voters of Medina County, those local funds we use, we, we pull down federal dollars. So we pull for every dollar. The federal government pays sixty per sixty cents and we pay forty cents out of tax dollars. So we're able to leverage those dollars and pull down a lot of money to help folks.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out.
Absolutely.
Information.
Yep.
The work you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cynthia Engelmann, which road? The county planning department, every third Wednesday of the month holds a, concept plan meeting for new developments and subdivisions. And this is like a preliminary concept plan where the applicant can meet with the county planning department and some other departments regarding their project. And in fact, last month, July, I attended such a meeting, uh, was related to the Country Brook Cove project. At, um, this, earlier this month at the zoning commission meeting, uh, trustee Augustine had mentioned that to the zoning commission, that if you attend the concept plan meeting, then you attend as a zoning commission member because the meeting is not open to the public and you are being notified of the meeting as a zoning commission member, that the meeting is even occurring. And this was then followed up by a comment from the zoning commission chair who indicated that, um, the concept plan meeting is not a planning commission meeting, which is open to the public. So, um, earlier today, somebody had brought to my attention that a, a resident contacted the county planning uh, department, the director, and inquired as to whether these concept plan meetings are open or closed meetings. And the response this person received was, quote, "The concept plan meetings are open to the public." And in fact, welcomed the resident to join the meeting. There's one tomorrow regarding the Bluestone project. And, um, further stated that the concept plan meeting allows a subdivision applicant to review and discuss agency comments, provide additional information and ask and answer questions, excuse me, about a proposed plan. The meeting does not include voting, making decisions or writing minutes, but meeting notes are taken and distributed to the participants, the agencies and the township. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there on the record that, um, when I attended last month, in fact, it was an open meeting and the statement made at zoning commission that it is not open to the public is in fact, um, not accurate per the planning directors' comments that it is open to the public.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What else? Nothing else for the good of the order. I will move to adjourn at seven thirty-nine PM.
Second.
Second of my actual, all in favor?
I.
I, thank you, everybody.